Board of Education will come to order at this time. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, or legal property acquisition issues and student issues. Maryland Local Government Code, Articles, Section 9, dash 512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Anyone oppose? The board will now enter into executive session. The Board of Education will reconvene at this time. We have Great Mills High School JROTC with us this morning, and they will present the colors. Please stand.
Aye. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, read. Hold. Ready. Cut. Oh, time. Hold. Oh, hold. 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 Ready. Cut. Walk.
Give them a round of applause if you would. Wonderful way. Stand right here, if you would. Board members, Dr. Raspa, we are delighted to have Great Mills. Want to get in line here? You were, as you were there. We're delighted to have the Great Mills ROTC here today to present the colors. We're fast, we're always thrilled when we have young people in front of us. It reminds us of why we do what we do, our special programs that are in place that assist in all of our young people succeeding. And what I'd like to do, I'm so proud of all these gentlemen here to see this morning, I'd like for you to introduce yourself, tell us your grade, and where you see yourself in the future, if you would. If you don't have a plan, that's okay too, all right? I could tell you were smiling with that. There you go.
My name is Josh Buscher. Not quite sure what I'm going to do when I get older, but somewhere military.
Very good. What grade?
Tenth grade.
That's great.
Okay, um, my name's Justin Kraft. I'm a senior in Great Mills High School. My plan is to go to college and get an engineering degree, maybe join the military perhaps.
Okay, wonderful.
Hello, my name's Alan Lee. I'm a sophomore, and in the future, I'd like to go to one of the military academies and hopefully join the military also.
Great.
I'm Caleb Barker. I'm a sophomore, and I want to enlist to the United States Marine Corps after I graduate.
Right, right, good. Want to graduate from high school first? Right here, introduce yourself. Pass it down.
Good morning, I'm First Sergeant Hamm. I'm the Naval Science Instructor at the program, assisting to Captain Kelly, who's Senior Naval Science Instructor. This morning, I wanted to take the pleasure and introduce Josh Baker, who's standing to my left, and I brought him as a fifth person, Dr. Madarano, to let everyone know. We are the largest NJROTC program. Every year, we're pulling about 150 students. And to date, Josh has just received a four-year NROTC scholarship at the University of New Mexico, which is worth $180,000.
Wow.
And so far, he is the 16th cadet from our program, which compused about $2.8 million. That's from the program that we've gotten this scholarship money. And so I'll let Mr. Josh tell you what he's going to do.
Okay, good. Step up there so I can see you.
Uh, my name is Josh Baker. As the First Sergeant already said, I have gotten a full ride to New Mexico, and I plan on joining the military after with a degree in chemical engineering.
Outstanding. We are so proud of you. Wonderful. So, what I'd like you to do is if you would pass the microphone back to the lady standing behind you, that's sitting behind you. I'd like for you to go down and just shake hands with all of our board members so that you can meet them personally. I'm so proud of you, you know that already. Great to see you. So proud of you.
Very proud of you. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for the wonderful job. Congratulations.
Great job.
Good job.
Now, head back to school, hit the books real hard. No more snow days, and keep moving forward. You have a wonderful day. You set off our day on a wonderful note. Thank you so much. Isn't that wonderful, Board members?
Absolutely.
Great way to start.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the board meeting this morning. Please turn off your cell phones if you haven't done so already. Thank you very much. I'd like to make a couple of introductions this morning. We have Anna Lofflin, President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County, with us this morning. Anna, how are you this morning? Fine. And we have Harold Siskin with us this morning, the Co-President of the St. Mary's County Public Schools Retirement Association. Harold, nice to see you. Moving on, Board members, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Now, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, the ayes have it. Moving on into board reports. Peter, we'll start with you this morning.
All right, thank you. First, I'd like to talk about the Drug Summit for Parents that was held Friday, March 7, at the Hollywood Firehouse. Myself and a couple other of my board, of the board members attended this event, and it was actually a very eye-opening event, and it was very, almost kind of shocking and scary in a sense of things that are happening locally in our county and also state and nationwide. The highlight of the evening and what was really put on concern was the abuse of opiates, which are painkillers and drugs occurring in our community. And with that, the, it was very informative. I know some of my other board members will go into a little bit of detail with some of the statistics. And multiple community members came up in the, they had almost like an open mic to ask questions, and multiple community members came up and addressed their concerns and asked very informative questions to the panel that we had that was there, that was there to answer questions and inform the public about it. And overall, it was a very informative meeting. And I want to send out a thank you to the Criminal Justice Program, whose program instructor was Sergeant Bailey. They came in an hour before the program actually started, helping setting up, putting things on chairs, helping during the event, helping coordinate people and answering questions. And they were very helpful during the event as well. I like to, every board meeting, I like to mention both my anti-bullying movement. And with that, um, excuse me, back to the, a lot of people actually asked, we have the Drug Summit for Parents at the Firehouse, but, and it was very informative, but what about the students? Getting the students involved, getting the students informed about these, about these issues. And in the second week of April, in the, during the Safety and Security Festivals, we're going to be having a, each of the high schools, we have a presentation on this, on this information. So, is going to the students as well. And with my bullying initiative, this week, I like to talk about hazing, which is a certain type of bullying. And a lot of people aren't really sure what hazing is and what it truly is and defines. And the definition of hazing is "an abusive, often humiliating form of initiation or affiliation with a group, including any willful action taken or situation created which recklessly or intentionally endangers the mental or physical health of another." And this is a term usually affiliated with athletes or college students, usually, and it is a big, very big issue. An Alfred University study revealed that eight out of 10 athletes have been hazed during their college athletic experience. And more than five out of every 10 athletes have been subjected to some form of hazing during their high school athletic career. And those are truly stunning numbers to really think about, especially going into college and seeing that these forms of bullying are being presented in so many different ways, from cyberbullying to hazing and with other types of forms. And it's just something that I'd really like to share with everyone at the board meeting. So, thank you, Dr. Raspa.
Peter, thank you very much. Mrs. Crosby.
I too went to the Drug Summit, and so did Mary. They said a lot in a couple hours, so I'm sure that we won't overlap too much, and if we do, it's so important, it's okay. There were four main things, they said. This is about drug abuse, of course. Be informed, talk about it with your child, act, and then go out and advocate. And parents came up. There were 500 parents. Not all 500, of course, spoke, but these were parents too, as I recall, had lost their children. It was absolutely, well, just terribly heartbreaking to have them go up there and talk. I just wanted, I picked out some facts that I think everybody should know. Nearly 70% of people 12 and older who abuse prescription drugs get them from a friend or a relative. This is something like Oxycontin, Oxycodone. They handed out this, maybe, well, maybe I could pass it around, and it has those prescription drugs that we take to help us for pain, but some people take them to get high. Although prescription opiate deaths have decreased, heroin overdose have increased. And here's where we get into something else. When one thing isn't available, they go to another thing, and that's what happens. St. Mary's admissions for treatment of prescription opiate use increased, get this one, 400% from 2008 to 2012. I taught this, I think, in 1969 to eighth and ninth graders, and at the time, the big drug was LSD. I just saw on the news, and I can't remember what they put it in, but somebody put some LSD, and a mother took it, and she had a baby, and were just lucky that they both survived.
It was in meat.
Pardon me? It was in meat. It was in meat. So Kathy saw it too. I just thought, that is absolutely terrible, because I showed movies about LSD, and some people thought they could fly, and out the window they go. So, they didn't mention that, but maybe that's not a main one right now. I don't know. It's, obviously, somebody's using it. St. Mary's rate of treatment admissions for heroin use increased 230% from 2008 to 2012. And this heroin, some people take it because it's a, it's strong, but sometimes it's laced with strychnine. And strychnine, as you know, is a very strong poison.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I think that one of the best things there was, I could tell from the people speaking, that people didn't know what to do. You know, what do I do? Where do I go? How do I get help? Now, the panel was good, but at the very end, a mother got up who lost her son. He went to college in Philadelphia, and he was going to become a doctor, and somebody shot him. Anyway, she, and I can say what she said, because she said it in front of 500 people. She is a recovering alcoholic, because if you know anything about drug abuse, you're never cured. It's a chronic condition, but you can put it in advance by doing things such as going to Alcoholics Anonymous, going to things such as Narcotics Anonymous, going, there's a place in Charles County called the Jude House, and they have support for these people. And it's a big, I didn't know, I knew it could be a problem, I didn't know it was this big a problem, but it is this big a problem. So, we all, this is something we all are going to have to get involved with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir. Friday, the 28th, I did something that we haven't done in a long time, played bingo. Me and Matty went to the PTA at Dinerd, and they fed us hot dogs and snacks, and she cleaned up. She was. I tell you, I haven't played bingo since I was probably this big, but just to see all the happy faces running up screaming bingo, it was a great night. It was a lot of fun.
Life was good.
It'll be on the schedule for, Matty will make sure it is on the schedule many more times this year.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mrs. Washington.
Thank you. I also attended the Drug Summit, which was held at the Hollywood Volunteer Fire Hall on Friday night. Even though it was a Friday night, several hundred people attended this excellent presentation. Introductions and interviews were from Ms. Lori Jennings Harris, Director of St. Mary's County Department of Agent and Human Services. That was a panel presentation, which consisted of the following people: St. Mary's County Sheriff Office, Tim Cameron; Daniel Aliotta, Captain Vice of Narcotics; Walden Sierra, Kathleen O'Brien, CEO of Walden; St. Mary's Department of Agent and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Prevention Team, Treatment Coordinator; St. Mary's County Health Officer, Dr. Brewster, and Dr. Michael Madarano, Superintendent of Schools. Mrs. Terry Hafer, a parent, told her personal story about how she lost her son to drug use and abuse. She said he was a good kid who got with friends and made very bad choices, which ended in his death. I think Mrs. Hafer telling her story touched practically everyone in the audience in a profound way. It was sad to see photos of life support connected to her son and knowing he would never come out of the coma. I thank Mrs. Hafer for sharing her personal story, because her son has only been dead six months, to get up in front of a crowd and talk about it. I believe many lives will be saved because she had the courage to tell the story of a mother losing her son. From her presentation, I think parents will be compelled to educate themselves more, to pay attention to the warning signs, and learn more about the risk factors. I was going to tell you about some of the facts from the meeting, and Mrs. Crosby did an excellent job of stating those facts. And I'll add something. She talked about the, although prescription and opiate deaths have decreased, heroin overdose deaths have increased at an alarming rate. Why? Heroin is stronger, cheaper, and easier to obtain. It is cheaper to buy heroin than a six-pack of beer. This is alarming. Where do we go from here? Treatment is available in St. Mary's County regardless of your income. So, if anyone is having a problem, it's no reason to say, I don't have the money. Dr. Kathleen O'Brien says she works with people to make sure that they can get the help that they need. You can go to Walden Sierra, seek services there. You can call the St. Mary's County Health Department. We need to talk to everyone to spread the news that it's growing epidemic that is in our county. We need to pay attention to our children and the warning signs of drug use or abuse. We need to talk to children when we suspect that something is wrong. We need to keep our medicine cabinets locked, because children get a lot of prescription drugs right from home. We need to dispose of unused or expired medications properly. You can do so anonymously at the St. Mary's County Sheriff Office 24/7. They won't ask you any questions. You can just drop any drugs or expired medication in a container there. Don't be afraid to use St. Mary's County Public School Hotline to report tips of suspected use, abuse, or sharing of prescription medications or illegal drugs. You could also call Walden Sierra Hotline 24/7. You can also, for additional help, on St. Andrews Church Road, where Walden Sierra sign is located, there is a place, it's actually a house for youth ages 12 through 17, who have a concern about drugs or alcohol. They can hang out there, talk with recovery and wellness coaches, get food, look for a job, and learn new skills and hobbies. For treatment locations and referrals 24/7, there is a Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAM, HSA. For additional information, you can also go to Healthy St. Mary's County Partnership. The Drug Summit for Parents was recorded, and people, parents can check to see when it will be aired. Also, after the presentation, there were several displays. I want to thank Dr. Charles Ridgell from St. Mary's County Public School. He was there with an excellent display, and I picked up some handouts. I think these were from the school. It was 150 Ways to Show Your Kids Your Care. All of this is free, and parents can just put that on their refrigerator. You don't know what to do, just take a look at that. Then, this was another one, 40, it's in Spanish and English, 40 Ways Anyone Can Build Assets in Their Children. Support, empowerment, boundaries, and expectations, constructive use of time, commitment to learning, positive values, social competencies, and positive identity. Such as positive identity is dwell on what a child do, children do right, instead of what they do wrong. That's just one. Social competency, having family meetings where children have a voice in decision-making. Positive values, remember that mistakes are part of living and growing. Commitment to learning, ask a young person to teach you a new skill. Constructive use of time, encourage teens to be involved in at least one hobby. Boundaries and expectations, talk together about how to establish family rules and consequences. Empowerment, encourage teenagers to take leadership roles in their community. Support, show courtesy to family members in public and at home. All of these things are free, and they are available in the community. Dr. Ridgell did a wonderful job, and I'm glad he was there on a Friday night. And this is about the Cove, the place I told you about, on St. Andrews Church Road, where the Walden sign is. Students can go there. It's fun, it's safe, and it's a sober place for youth. And the hours are listed, just call Walden. That's the house that they go to, and they have games and sports, a nice place for teens to hang out. So, there, we are blessed in St. Mary's County that we have a lot of support. Many counties do not, and for a county with just 110,000 people, we have a lot to help people. So, it's no need to suffer in isolation. You're not alone, and their help is available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Allen.
I had an opportunity recently to pronounce the words for the middle school spelling bee. A little change of pace here. And congratulations to the winner, Jennifer Tennant. She is a seventh-grade student at Father Andrew White. This is the first time in the 36 years of the history of the bee locally that a student from Father Andrew White was the winner. The person who came in second place is a young student at Spring Ridge Middle School, a sixth grader by the name of Mark Ballou. And I suspect we will see much more from Mark in the coming years. His family petitioned for him to be able to enter the bee in fifth grade, but because it is a middle school spelling bee, that petition was not granted. But he was a remarkable speller, and I know that he will be successful in the years to come, as his sisters have been before him. The, Jennifer correctly spelled succotash, which Mark had missed, and then went on to spell macrame in order to win the bee. So, congratulations to all of them. And I see that they already have the spelling bee set for next year. I was a little confused when it came, the email came to say the spelling bee, and I thought, well, didn't we just do that? But they've already got the date and a snow date as well. And...
All you funny people out there.
I know, aren't we just? But just to close, I, all of my colleagues and I attended the Board of County Commissioner Work Session yesterday, as they reviewed their budget going forward and the school system submitted budget. And we still have a ways to go, both in our discussions with the commissioners, but also in the process itself. But certainly am hopeful. They have already agreed to fund us over maintenance of effort. We will continue to make the case for the important work we're doing, the programs, the people, and the performance. And so, stand by. It's, it's always a moving target, but I think, all things considered, budget-wise, we fared pretty well yesterday. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. Of course, the Board of County Commissioners' work sessions are always most interesting. But we will be there again.
Absolutely.
And trying to present our budget and our needs. I would like to remind everyone that Friday evening at Bowles Farm, Becker is having the annual scholarship dinner and auction celebration to raise funds for student scholarships. And everyone should attend. The doors open at 5:30. This year, there's a special performance happening, and we have a special celebrity that will be present.
Elvis.
And I urge everyone to come and enjoy themselves and be part of the festivities.
It's comedian.
I will say no more about that. Dr. Madarano, superintendent's report.
I'm not going to say anything either. I'm very comfortable speaking and leading the school systems. I'm way out of my comfort zone when it comes to singing and playing the guitar, but anything for the children, whatever it takes. So, the new band that has been formed in town is entitled The Sheriff and the Soup, so I will let your mind go from there, the performance that will occur. Anyhow, so thank you for that, Dr. Raspa. I think we've just maybe increased the attendance by 100%.
Yes.
Just to see that. All right then. It's my turn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was all ready to go on some other things. Didn't expect that. Jim, go ahead and put up the website, if you would, so we can have that as a backdrop as we're talking. I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to build on the conversation that's already occurred and go out of order with some of my presentations. So, first of all, good morning, Board members. It's great to see you. To our audience members and to our community who's watching along as we videotape this and it'll be posted on our website. I want to start with the Drug Summit, which was extremely well-attended. Ms. Crosby and Mrs. Washington have already alluded to that, and very directly, as well as Peter, in terms of your comments, and you made some comments as well that evening. We had over 600 people in attendance, very pleased with it. I want to thank Dr. Ridgell and Rhonda Harris for coordinating the efforts in terms of our involvement with the committee that's worked on this very diligently. I was absolutely overwhelmed by the number of attendees that evening on a Friday night, after a long night, a long week for individuals, it just demonstrated true the importance of the event and the need for it. When I spoke, it was, we each had several minutes to speak in terms... When I spoke, it was, we each had several minutes to speak in terms of, as community leaders and organizational pieces around this whole issue, because we know it's a multi-pronged approach. It doesn't just rest with the school system. It doesn't just rest with the sheriff. It doesn't just rest with Walden. It doesn't just rest with the county. It rests with all of us, mainly as, and parents as well. A number of us went in and did a public announcement as well for, to be running on cable channels here as well, and the statement was that parents are the anti-drug in that sense, in terms of promotion of watching your own child, changes in behaviors, and all of us keeping alert to those kind of changes and swings and erratic behaviors, differences in behaviors and habits, et cetera. Talked about staying engaged with your child, being very clear, watching the history on computers and emails, the whole aspect of bullying, all those things emerge. And young people have their own set of language of which they use, the conversations about having red eyes and saying, oh, you know, Mom, I was at the pool swimming, you know, and knowing that they weren't, you know, to mask it in the language that children use, young people use, to stay, to stay in tune. We talk about that always. The best way to know a child, to know a child, to teach a child well, you must learn to know a child well, and you have to be present always. I was talking to several parents at the end of the evening, and they said, you know, the tendency is, as the children get older, it just naturally happens, parents are very involved at the elementary level, 10 parent conferences. And as just data shows, qualitative and quantitative, as young people advance through the upper grade levels, parents want to balance that out with independence, and they don't stay involved at those levels. Quite frankly, there's a greater need to stay involved at the high school level and the middle school level, based upon the fact of the many things that students can experiment with and dabble in that can get them in trouble. So, the great need for after-school programs, community engagement, just a full focus in terms of prevention and recognizing how we must continue to proceed. My comments were clearly directed at a culture of prevention and education, what we do as a school system, and feel very good about our efforts, but we can do more, building from our budget yesterday, the conversation, the need for more psychologists, you know, to address this, the need for more of the aspect of our guidance counselors, the aspect of all of our teachers being a part of this. One of the things that I alluded to is right front and center, Board members. There it is. Scroll down, if you would, on our website. So, community, anybody, parents, anybody, we talk about this all the time, but, you know, we get desensitized by messages. We only hear what we want to hear, and we, we've talked about this often, and people think, well, I don't need to know about that. But the reality is, it's a confidential school reporting hotline for anything and everything. And I get calls on that, whether it's an issue of a child who is suffering in silence, of a concern, a parent who needs additional support, a parent who is aware, or a community member who is aware of illicit activities occurring in our schools or in our neighborhoods, let us know. This is a main portal for communication, that if we don't have the answer, we can then shift it to another community leader, a community resource, to provide that support and assistance. So, I don't want any community member ever to feel that they're in isolation, that they don't have anybody to turn to. My goodness, people know how to access me 24/7 personally, and I pride myself on that. So, if you can't get to anybody else, tweet me, email me, call me, do what you do, you know, in that sense, in this day and age, when we're very active in all of those communication pieces. Because the worst thing is, is to be out there suffering and feeling that you have no one to turn to. We might not have the answers, but at least we can have the opportunity to shift and shuffle and get information for help for people who need that, that information, and shuffle it to the, to the individuals who need to get that too, so that they can respond. There's our confidential reporting hotline, front and center on our website, W S M C P S dot org. And right there, as you come up to the homepage, if it were a snake, it would bite you. That's how we want that to be, right there. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt, for putting that right on the front page. We've got it embedded in his section as well, but we wanted that there. And that's been there for the last year or so, right front and center. But again, like everything else, we, how many times do people visit that website and then click right over it, and they don't see? We get desensitized because so much message is coming at us. I also want to mention that we did videotape it. Mrs. Washington, you mentioned that. We videotaped it as well. Our staff was there, and that's going to run on Channel 96, our educational channel, over and over in that sense. So, the, so, the aspect for me is, the summit was wonderful, now what? How do we take that energy in the room, and what do we do? We are examining our own programs. We're examining how we advance. There was conversation advanced to me from several sources about the fact that we need to have our own summit, you know, for, for students to be able to have a panel and discussion, and to continue to keep this information out in front of people, and we're going to take all that under advisement as the year advances. But this is not like an event, and everybody pats themselves on the back that we came together on a Friday night, and this is not something you have a scrape on your knee and put a Band-Aid on. This is continual efforts with everybody in that sense. And the scary part of it for me, as someone who has devoted his whole life to supporting and helping young people and trying to make a difference in the lives of young people, is the fact that there's so much great information we know about young people and the developmental process, and that level of invincibility, that individuals think that that's going to happen to someone else, or it won't happen to me, and the level of experimentation, the reckless thought that goes into that, but also recognizing, you know, genetic predisposition as well. So, this is not an easy issue for people to handle. It's not just go to a treatment, 10-step program, and you're cured. People are addressing this their entire life and managing addiction, whether it's drugs, alcohol, gambling, whatever it is. The addictive processes of the brain development piece need to be managed through life, and opportunities to have support system, because temptation can be great, stressful events can bring it on, and regression can occur, just because they've gone through treatment, and we've heard all of that. So, from my vantage point, as someone who is trained in a variety of different ways in terms of counseling, et cetera, recognizing a multi-pronged, continuous, sustainable approach, that the summit is wonderful to galvanize the approach, and I'm all about that, but what do we do after that in the continuation? Very much how we run the school system, that we don't just celebrate an event, we then do it throughout the year. And Mike has been a true leader in this from the safety and security arena. If you look at all of our schedules, our calendars, we're hitting this all through the year, whether it's alcohol, safe driving, our festivals, even the conversations about the parking pass at the high schools. We shifted that whole culture to say it's not just given out, but to whom much is given, much is expected. When we give that parking pass, there's a level of responsibility, and they're held accountable to that, to drive safely, not to use alcohol and drugs, and it says it clearly on that contract. So, the fact is for us, through either Red Ribbon Week or a variety of issues, is to constantly keep this information in the forefront of children. And then also responding to your question, which was excellent, how do you kind of help each other in terms of peer pressure? And if you know young people are involved in this, and your friends are going down the wrong path, and my conversation with parents is very clearly predicated on the fact, engage. Engage with your child. Engage and say, I don't want you hanging out with this child who's involved in this activity. Don't let that to their own sort of devices in that sense. Engage if you see your child is not hanging out with the crowd that's in line with your values, or it's going to cause issues. Or if your child is being bullied, don't be quiet. So, I direct people back, you know, and sometimes it takes, you know, really strong individuals to stand up and say, I know something's going wrong here, and tend to be able to have the courage to report it. We have a very systematic, wonderfully developed process of communication in this school district that not everybody sees, in the fact that if somebody reports it to me, I can protect the source, and through other ways of intelligence and communication and research, be able to isolate that. So, whether it comes in on a confidential hotline, or somebody reports it, I just want to know, so that we can help. So, the whole conversation, you know, even as I tie it in, that in terms of snow days, and you probably wonder, how am I going to make an extrapolation, a connection to this? You know, every now and then, somebody will say, you know, why did you close school? And my comment would be, I would rather lose a day of school than lose a life. I would rather somebody report us and us intervene, you know, in maybe the ways, or even if it doesn't fare out, I'd rather have the opportunity to engage, so that we can protect individuals, so that we don't lose another life. Because the stories presented, those are emotional. They're, they're just gut-wrenching in terms of when, Mrs. Hafer, when she spoke, I mean, that's just so moving and so sad, and then seeing, and we know the children. I know both the kids there, the mothers who were there, you know, I've known them throughout the process, and when they're ours, they're our children, and you see this, and this occurs to them, it's extremely emotional for us and very sad. And I think about the days, and I said this in my words the other night, I remember exactly where I was when I got the word, or the, both of the children that were there that evening, or the, the parents of the children, when I got the word about their passing. And I think about them. I think about the accident, the car accident, every time I drive by Route 5, every time I drive through there, I think about that car accident. I think when I was there, when I heard about Mrs. Hafer's child, where, where we were, because they're, they're near and precious, as I stated that evening. These are our children. We must protect them and keep them safe. So, my message very clearly is to keep this message going, what we need to do as a school system, but what we all need to do, and parents staying engaged, and when you are at your loss, because these are tough things to deal with, that there's other people to turn to, that you're not in this alone. So, the confidential hotline, the school system, we serve as a way to help. So, I probably went on here longer, because I had a very confined time. I could speak the other evening, because just in terms of the evening being several hours long, and others, I wanted to have an opportunity here to speak a little longer about the school system's perspective. I'm proud of our community for being, to, as a bell ringer event, to galvanize around this particular community event, but as I've said three times, you can tell it's important when I repeat myself, what do we do now? It's wonderful to have words, but what are our actions? Let our actions speak more volume than our words in this sense. So, we're up for that challenge. We're going to continue to do our part and look at what we've got in place, but knowing, we feel very comfortable with what we have in place, and we're going to continue to hold young people accountable if they engage in activities, but also for them to also be educated as they move forward too. It's not in terms of punitive, but to hold them accountable, so that they learn from their mistakes, so that they can keep a healthy, safe life ahead, so that they don't put themselves at risk, and it's just as important, others at risk. Because when young people make decisions, and they get behind a wheel, it puts the whole community at risk. So, everybody has a dog in the hunt on this particular topic, and needs to be vigilant and ever vigilant in terms of working together on that. So, I ask for the community's cooperation, the community's collaborative communication on this, and aggressive level of communication of reporting on this. I really do want that. So, I want to continue, Dr. Raspa. Thank you for allowing me the time to talk about that. Specifically, want to, again, thank all the staff members that have been highlighted in terms of making that night a success for us, and we're continuing available to do it, provide support. I want to jump into another hot topic for us, that is the inclement weather. I think since the last time we have met, we had two additional days. That brings us to a grand total of 11. So, follow along. It's a very quick math problem. If I had an additional finger, I would put it up right now. 11, 10 plus 1, using my manipulatives, imagine another finger over there. And we have used a grand total of 11 days. We have, through the process of the natural calendar, we have made up five, so we're down to six in that sense. We, through the action of the board, we use President's Day. That was a grand total of six that we've made up. Six from 11 is five, so five remaining. If you remember, Board members, that I wanted to define a plan forward for us in the event that we had other ones, how we would move forward, and we identified three additional days, that if we only had eight, or, excuse me, yeah, nine days, we would be able to address those through the calendar by using May 2nd, the last day of school, and Easter Monday. That would be those three. So, that's still over there as dangling, that needs to be executed as one day, but if you're following your math, we've used five. You've given me three, we've got two left. So, with your direction, and then after the last snow day, and being very aware of being the president of the superintendent group this year, and providing the direction to others as well on this topic, and what we've done in the past on this, is that I redeveloped our letter, as I've shared with you. I have asked the state superintendent to consider a waiver day, not a Labor Day, a waiver day, I want to get my letters right here, a waiver day for five of the remaining five days, because they're as defined in, in all of our worlds, as act of God, out of our control. We can't control those. And my rationale is very clear for that, is that by law, we have to be in school, our young people in the state of Maryland, we have to monitor both seat time, which we always have well, in terms of our levels, in terms of hours, then we monitor days, which is 180 days. But let me throw you back to 2010. The class of 2010 thought they were all that and a bag of chips, and they are. They're very special young people, but they thought they were extra special, because it was a class of 2010, and they got 10 snow days. They thought because they were the class of 2010, we gave them 10 snow days, and seniors don't have to make these up, which is comical. I laugh at that. We were not shooting for a new goal of the class of 2014, but that was out there, advancing in terms of the pressure being put on me to close schools even further. It was starting today, as a matter of fact, as they said that there was a possibility of a tornado warning, and they wanted another day because of that today. I love our young people in that sense. I have to have some humor to keep us moving forward. But in 2010, if you remember, I submitted a letter to the state. We used 10 that year. I submitted a letter to the state for five waiver days at that point, and it was granted. I used that same logic in the letter that I sent to the state superintendent, indicating that in 2010, we had the same conditions. We used 10, you granted five. We mitigated locally with the other ones. In 2014, I used this in the same logic, that this year, we've used 11. I've mitigated even further with our board, with the President's Day as well as the five days, and I'm requesting the five days for waiver days. What would that mean? So, let me give you two scenarios. I need to get the action back from the state board at your recommendation, and I will bring it back to you for a public vote, depending upon the decision. If it's all five, those three days that you approved will be restored as actual days. So, there will be, the, the holiday will remain for the Monday after spring break. Spring break will remain intact. I'm getting lots of calls about spring break and vacations. At this level, spring break remains intact, and we're going to stick to that because of plentiful efforts in terms of calendar. The only day that we were going to remove from spring break was Easter Monday, so that would be restored if we get all five. The May 2nd day will be restored as a professional development day, which we need intensely as we're dealing with next year's planning issues for our young people, articulation issues, and professional development needed for the Common Core, et cetera, et cetera. And the last day of school will remain intact as June 12th. So, we would not move into June 13th, and everything else remains in place at that level. Now, if that doesn't get all five, and I get a combination of those, you can imagine, I'll go back and look at the options that you've allowed me to, to use, and make a recommendation to you. So, for example, if they were to only grant two waiver days, then I would use all three of the actions that the board has already approved. We've already set a standard in terms of how we would look forward. But I'm waiting for a recommendation, or, I'm waiting for a decision on our, on the request that I've made, and I've been told that that will be made within the next week or so. That will give me plenty of time to bring it to you, plenty of time to communicate all of this to our community, based upon any actions for the need to take place, because all those other actions would occur in April, May, and June. And my goal is to be extremely sensitive to community, because the community has been extremely supportive of our efforts, but also they, they want to know, so that they can make plans for summer, for vacations, but also, we need to be able to have it in place, because people always ask what we do over the summer. As soon as school ends, we work just as hard, if not harder, in the summer, preparing summer programs that begin, the, the summer hiring process, and it's a compressed summer as it is, with our start date in August, that was approved at the last board meeting as well. So, there's really great pressure to get this resolved, and anticipating that we're not going to have any further inclement weather days. So, that's the proverbial, right now, as you can see, the, the march coming in like a lion going, like a lamb. I surely hope that it does. But as we were close to 80 degrees yesterday, I think the roller coaster's supposed to take us down into the 30s, 20s, wind chills and single digits, and then back up into the higher temperatures again. So, the good news is that we get into this weather pattern, longer days of, longer times of daylight in the evening, the intensity of where the sun is positioned. So, but it can happen. To give you an interesting sort of comparison of data, not that I revel in the misery of others, but there's always someone who has a different or worse story, and I always say, it could be worse. Garrett County, my colleagues out there, they are at day 19, just to give you an indication, and they're not going to begin to make any kind of adjustments to calendar until the end of March, because they can continue into April with weather events historically. They start as early as October, and can historically go until the end of March and through April. And they're calling for an event there this evening, as a matter of fact. So, I wanted to bring the community up to speed. I think I presented that in a very logical, clear way for people to understand the road forward, how we move forward, but we do have law to deal with, we do have legal issues that we have to deal with. I have to seek waivers, and, and again, I just throw as a little asterisk, if we do execute And again, I just throw as a little asterisk, if we do execute, if we do have to use the day after spring break, that is a holiday, and I have yet to seek a waiver on that day yet. I have to do that, but I'm waiting. Because every one of these is based upon a step, you know, in terms of what the next action is. So I think we're pretty clear on that. I want the community to be very clear. If there's any reporters who want any follow-up with that, let me know. But we've been communicating at the local level on this. And Mr. Smith, only thing I'm going to ask is to just take a little bit of that, what I said. We've been communicating this individually to principals. Just let them know kind of conceptually where we are in terms of waiver. And people know that, but I just want to be assured of that piece. Let me continue because rapidly now, my time is going fast. It's already over, I'm sure. We've had some wonderful opportunities recently. Your school system is being represented at both the state level and the national level. Had some opportunity to participate in the regional conference, National Regional Conference for Apex over in Bethesda. Presented our program in terms of support, how we want all young people, these programs that are in place, to ensure young people are achieving, not failing, and making certain that all these programs are there. Apex is one of those masterful programs in place that we're getting tremendous results, shifting our dollars, and ensuring that 91.5% graduation rate, to ensure children are succeeding. And that's what we want to have happen. We want to ensure every child, I mean, I'm not going to rest until we have that graduation rate way up into the high 90s now. You know, we want everybody, all of our schools, and that's where we need to be with that. The discovery education, using tech books, we were a part of a major discussion there at the national level that was Skyped in, as far as people Skyped in and watching from California, from Canada, all across the world, watching us talk about the advancement of online curriculum and the eBooks and the variety of other things that we're doing as a pilot basis. And I'm still going to advance that. I know there was conversation at the budget hearing about that, but we're going to advance that as we get more data, to kind of go slow to go fast, recognizing the need. But again, I'm defining what the needs are for our school district juristically, but also being efficient in terms of that. I want to share with you a quick email and a couple other wonderful pieces, and then I will move to the, turn us back to your chairman. I received a wonderful email from a community member, I think many of you know. Goes like this. "Mike, good morning. Wanted to take a minute to wave the flag on behalf of yesterday's mock interview program at the Forest Center. Ann Johnson and Britt Carney are to be commended for running a wonderful program. The students were great. They were earnest and worked diligently in the interviews. This is a great program and an even greater learning opportunity for the students. It is also a reaffirmation of the quality of the education that my son Thomas received through SMCPS. It is prominent among the reasons for his success in college and now as a computer systems engineer. I truly enjoyed the experience and look forward to next year. Best regards, Tom Russell, Managing Director of SMECO." And that was wonderful because we had talked about that. I get tons of communication from community often. Want to share those with you. Want to congratulate Park Hall Elementary for being spotlighted in the February issue of the Maryland Association for Outdoor Education Newsletter for their continuing outstanding work on green schools program. Shoot up there, if you would, for me a picture that I want to give the board some references to. And go to the next one first. So I want to tell you a little story. This is our corollary sports program in place with our wonderful teacher, Rocco Aiello, under the direction of our wonderful Director of Special Education, Melissa Charbonne. And I think she just stepped out. I don't know where she went. I wanted her to see this. So this is an email from Rocco, and he said, "I want to share with you a few pictures of one of your students, our students, Ania Gamut and her teammates from Chopticon High School." Now, what's important about this is, is that this is bowling. And Ania was able to bowl for the very first time in her life by using our new electronic bowling ramp. Now, look at her smile. Look at her smile. I mean, that's why I said, and he says it already, "The picture speaks volumes of Ania's being more independent and successful and having a feeling of enhanced self-esteem as she participates in corollary sports bowling." I know that you would enjoy these pictures, Dr. Materano, and I do. And I think it's absolutely wonderful. And the big smile on her face. And then if you would just go to the second one, Jim, which is the total group. See her again there as well. That was a very special day. But, you know, again, we're about making certain our young people get over the wall. Every young person needs a different sized ladder. And we want to make certain that there was any obstacles in front of our young people, that we're breaking those down so they can have a life of full success and benefits based upon the educational offerings that we provide. And we're so proud of all those different offerings of choice that we've put in place with the support of this board and the continued enhancements of that. So I, and we, I'm sorry you missed my conversation about you, but... Yeah, very good. So we're glad, we're just so pleased with this and get the word back to everybody in the program, how proud I am and pleased of this as well. So wonderful. Kudos to everybody in special ed. So I end again, celebration, always opportunities, things always going on across the continuum. So I will end, sit back and listen to all these wonderful names. These are your work hard and be nice people for the month of February. And although a short month, we sure had a lot of worker bees and being nice bees, it seems like going through. So Alyssa Bennett, Lindsey Brenfleck twice, Stephanie Brindle, cafeteria staff at Greenview Knowles, cafeteria staff at Lexington Park, the cafeteria staff at Esperanza Middle School, cafeteria staff at Lennertown Middle School. Kathy Carabine, Kim Collins, the Division of Supporting Services, all eight departments. What's going on over there, Mr. Clemens? They are really working hard and being nice with all the snow removal and everything that had to occur there. Bridget Dunbar, Sharon Dvorak, Priscilla Dyson, David Edwards, Linda Gatten, Chris Grace, Jacqueline Grantland, Rhonda Harris, Amanda Hartwig, Brenda Hecker, Stephanie Hausman, Susan Hausman, Nadine Hughes, Ellen Johnson, Anna Jones, Marissa Kincaid twice, Carol Clink, Emma Knott, Stephanie Langton, Lisa Longworth, Joshua Lynch, Paul Miles, Maureen Montomuro, Matt Newcamp, Greg Norris. Wow. Keep working it, boy. That's good. Glad to hear it. He's being nice too, up there in finance. Gary O'Neil, Melanie Otto, Megan Fantasy, Gary Robinson, Deborah Samlinay, Zachary Solapek, Sean Sayers, Kim Summers, Wendy Tar, Rhonda Wathan, Terry Williams, Dieta Weinmiller, Barbara Winters, and Alyssa Xavier. So congratulations to all our Work Hard and Be Nice Award winners. Dr. Raspa, thank you for allowing me to go on a little longer about some important issues. You've already talked about the budget. The process continues. It's a process. And glass is half-full for me. I know for the board, we need to continue to make a case for everything that we do and why we do on behalf of our young people, and we'll move that forward as well. So back to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Materano. Very complete report. Thank you. There are no recognitions this morning. There's no public hearing today. There are no public comments.
No public comments.
Brings us to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move...
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Action item. We have one action item this morning, and it's on policy EFAA, second reading. Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones, how are you this morning?
I'm doing great. And good morning to everybody.
Good morning.
So this morning, we're taking a look at policy EFAA, the use of USDA commodities. And the reason for the revision to the policy is to bring the policy into the current format for all board policies. And also to provide a new focus on managing the program, commodities program, to ensure that we're receiving the highest quality of nutritious meals. The policy went through the first reading, was offered up for public comment, did not receive any recommendations for changes, and there were no comments. And now bringing it forward for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. O'Meara, any questions?
It looked fine to me.
Everything's fine.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, board members, questions, comments? Mr. Jones, Mrs. Allen?
No questions. Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
No questions. Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Crosby?
None. Thank you.
And Pega?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. We need a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve policy EFAA as presented by staff.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Jones, thank you very much. Before we venture into information items, we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you, sir.
Information items. COMAR changes related to student discipline. Dr. Ridgell.
The board members, before Dr. Ridgell gets up there, want to frame this a little bit. If you remember our very long meeting last time over our budget and different things, we wanted to have this the last meeting. We wanted you to be fresh on this one. This agenda, as you can see, is not quite as robust as our last one. We had a lot of items to cover. And this is getting lots of great conversation. Mavis chimed in on this. There's best practices out there, and it's evolving and flowing. What I want you to know is sort of the, and you know a lot of this already through your association, but what we need to do to make all this work and adjustments that we need to do. So Charles has been working very clearly on this, working with Ed, with all of us as we're responding to the directives and expectations from the State Board of Education on it. And then also getting into then the actual code of conduct and what that looks like as well. So for this time, this is an opportunity for you to comment on this and for Charles, Dr. Ridgell, to bring us up to speed on this. Okay, so go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In July 2012, the Maryland State Board of Education issued a report focused on reform of school discipline in Maryland. The report, "School Discipline and Academic Success: Related Parts of Maryland's Education Reform", was the result of almost two years of study by the state board. The report was shared with you at the November the 14, 2012 meeting. Since then, changes for the Code of Maryland Regulations, known as COMAR, were drafted and issued for public comment. The final changes were expected to be approved by the Maryland State Board of Education in January 2013. But extensive discussion led to further refinement by a work group. Final actions on the proposed changes were taken at the January 2014 meeting. It is these changes that I'd like to share with you this morning. The COMAR changes require each school system in 2014, 2015 to review and revise its student discipline policies to reflect a discipline philosophy based on goals of fostering, teaching, and acknowledging positive behaviors. Keep students connected to schools so that they may graduate college and career-ready. Remember, our graduation rate is 91.5.
Thank you for reminding us.
Describe the conduct that may lead to out-of-school suspension or expulsion, known as the code of conduct. Allowing for discretion in school discipline is we have a range of a minimum, maximum for each of those offenses in our code of conduct. Assess the ways the educational and counseling needs of suspended students will be met and explain why and how long-term suspensions or expulsions are last resort options. It is very much a pro-social approach to positive behavior versus a punitive approach, a focus on the teaching and learning of appropriate behaviors with a lot of work on prevention in the first place. One of the major changes for us will be to review the definitions in our policies. For example, expulsions is a very rare event and rarely happens in St. Mary's County. But based on the new definitions, it is possible that we would have students to fall under this definition. So expulsions would be, the student would be removed if that removal is 45 school days or longer. That, of course, is determined by the superintendent or his designated representative. It takes place at a conference. Those conferences are held at each of the schools. The conference includes a review of the history of the student in respect to their attendance, their academics, and their discipline. Those conferences are attended by the student, the parents, the principal, the school counselor, and the pupil personnel worker. The key to remember about those conferences is that the student is always at the forefront of that discussion and a focus on making it a learning experience. What will be different here, and it still, is those comparable educational services. In the past, an expulsion was that total removal, and that's why it's an extremely rare event. But the definition would change for 45 school days or longer, and we would provide those comparable educational services. Expulsions are only used when a student poses an imminent threat of serious harm to other students or staff. Extended suspensions is a current term, but that is for suspensions lasting between 11 and 45 days now. It used to be 11 and beyond. This, of course, is also determined by the superintendent's designee using that same process of a conference at the school level. Extended suspensions are used only when a student poses, again, an imminent threat of serious harm to other students or staff, or the student has engaged in chronic and extreme disruption of the educational process that has created a substantial barrier to learning for other students. So the extended suspension is used in either of those two cases, but again, following that similar process. Again, we provide comparable educational services and appropriate behavioral supports. Students who currently fall into this category, those educational services are provided through the IAEA, the Interim Alternative Education Center, or through the Alternative Education Program. Long-term suspensions is a new term, so a new definition that we need to add. Long-term suspensions last between four and 10 days. Currently, that's considered in the short-term range definition. These are, of course, determined at the school site by the principal. Students receive their classwork, their assignments from the teachers. It is corrected, returned to the students, so forth. The key there being that that would happen more frequently on a weekly basis. The principal assigns a staff member to be the liaison between the teachers and the students, who then keeps that communication by phone or email. Currently, each of our schools already have a person designated to be the liaison in terms of working with students who are suspended and getting them the necessary work and assignments, as well as working with the AEP teachers or the teachers at the IAEA. Nothing has changed there in terms of when we use long-term suspensions. It's again, for instance, is when the behavior of the student is disruptive and detrimental to the operation of the school. With adding the term of long-term suspensions, then short-term suspensions, those are ones that will last one through three days. So again, the definitions are changing a little bit in terms of the number of days. Again, students get their schoolwork to be able to complete during the suspension period. Again, that contact information and all of having their assignments and the process is very consistent in terms of when a student would be absent for health reasons as well. The COMAR changes also include the extended suspensions and the expulsion conferences that we talked about before. They must be completed by the 10th day. That is part of COMAR. Our benchmark in St. Mary's has always been to do them on the 8th day. So when a school calls into our office and they request one of those expulsion conferences, then we count out and try to do it on the 8th day, so that we're well within that window of the 10 days already. Then if the additional time is necessary to complete... Then if the additional time is necessary to complete the process, either because of delays due to the parent or guardian's unavailability, or the complexity of the investigation, we have days nine and ten as backups that we could take and do those conferences. So that part, we've sort of already been built into our schedule. The key here difference is if the student is not allowed to return to school until after the tenth day, the superintendent or designee has to notify the student or parent and guardian within twenty-four hours. So the, normally, the student would have the conference before they return. Now it would be possible for the student to come back before the conference is held if we have not made that tenth day. So that's why that benchmark of eight day, the eighth day, is very important to us. Another change is in terms of appeals. If the student and their parents wish to appeal the decision of the superintendent's designee, those appeals currently come to me, and I am that first level of appeal. The COMAR changes has the appeals being heard by the local Board of Education or its designated officer. The local board has forty-five days in which to hear the appeal and issue the decision. The timeline is also applies if the local board decides to use a hearing officer. It can be extended by requesting the state superintendent for an extension of time beyond the forty-five days, if necessary. And again, in those appeal hearings, there, of course, would be the witnesses and so forth from both sides. Also in the changes in COMAR would have all student arrests reported to the Maryland State Department of Education beginning in the 2015, 2016 school year. A reporting format is being developed by MSD for us to use. We are part of helping to develop that format. Both Mr. Wyon, as the Director of Safety and Security, and myself have had an opportunity to review it. It asks for the standard, you know, kinds of information in terms of the student number, school grade, gender, age, offense that the student has committed. In that, getting ready for that, of course, Mr. Wyon has been preparing and working with the principals in providing those written summaries to his office already. So that information is already in place for us. It's that information that we would then take and use to report them to MSD. We're not required to do the actual reporting yet, though, until the fifteen, sixteen school year. Another thing included in COMAR is reducing and eliminating the disproportionality and discrepant impact on students, looking at that disproportional impact on minority students, and looking at the impact of discipline on special education students. You know, one of the advantages we've had in St. Mary's is we have worked very hard to reduce the numbers of suspensions and all over the last nine years in all of our different groups as well. So that part, we've been attempting to address and work on. If school systems are found to have this disproportionality, as MSD develops that process, then the school system would be required to develop a plan. That plan would require that it be reduced, and beginning with one-year reports, annual reports, and then eliminate it in three years. In terms of where we are, again, then to summarize in this process, we've certainly been working to reduce the number of out-of-school suspensions by using interventions. Over the last nine years, our suspensions have been reduced by fifty-two percent. We eliminated in the 2010, 2011 school year, the in-school suspension program, and instead adopted an in-school intervention model. So that allows students to remain in school, continue their learning and their instruction and so forth on a regular basis. We've certainly been implementing other in-school intervention programs as well, whether they be lunch sessions after school. Some of the high schools have also done Saturday school kinds of things, mediation mentoring programs and all in that respect. Part of this also will include reviewing and revising the Code of Conduct. Currently, it is expected that the State Board will look at, in April, will look at guidelines that's been developed by a work group in terms of suggestions for the Code of Conduct. We, if you recall, last year, in the J section, which is where the Code of Conduct is in St. Mary's, we looked at the Code of Conducts of about ten other school systems and compared St. Mary's to the ten, and I had the opportunity to be part of that work group. So while that information is not public yet, we at least had a sense of where those guidelines were going to be. So last year, I brought to you all of those changes and things for the Code of Conduct and all in the policies. So in that respect, unless something has changed in the last six months, when it does come before the State Board, we've already been working on that as well. One of the things that is very proactive in terms of helping students is the PBIS, the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. We had that at eight schools. We have added five additional schools this year. At the last meeting, I was also had to remind you, because Mr. Matthews talked all about those Dynert Dragon Dollars and all of that part of PBIS, and indeed, how effective it was. Dynert is one of those five schools that added it this year. We have two more waiting for next year, so we're up, we'll be up to fifteen. But PBIS is really effective because it establishes those expectations, teaches those expectations then to the student, and acknowledges when the students have done really well in implementing those expectations. The hearings, again, going back to those conferences, the hearings always in the past provided an oral decision with a written decision to follow. Two years ago, we started giving the written decision copies of it at the hearing. So the minutes still follow of the hearing, we mailed them out after the hearing, but now the written decisions are actually provided to the parents at the hearing itself. As we talked, much of this looks at those educational services that are provided to the students who are on suspension. We've been working real hard in terms of using Apex and working with Dr. Fancella in the coordinating of that program. So Apex is now used at the IAEA, and is also used by the students on the AEP program. It is not in lieu of the teachers, but it is in addition to having the teachers and having those resources and all available, again, so we can increase those educational services to the students who are suspended from school. One of the things that, again, the COMAR changes talks about is those behavioral supports. So at the IAEA, we added this year, or you added in the budget, a point-five FTE school counselor that can work with those students as well and work on that behavioral support program. We talked about the written summaries of all arrests. Those go to Mr. Wyon currently, so we're already in, got that practice and process in place for when it does click in with the fifteen, sixteen school year to report them to MSD. And we've continued to offer professional development and all in terms of classroom management, such as the CHAMP program that is provided by Teaching, Learning, and Professional Development, and One, Two, Three Magic that is provided, training by the school psychologist. For all the things we've been working on in the last few years to get ready for the changes with COMAR, knowing that they were coming, we've still got a few next steps. One will be to bring to you the policies with the new definitions in them, so we can have them in place for next year. We're continuing to work on the intervention piece and look at the possibilities of other interventions to use with our students. At the Maryland State Board of Education meeting in January, the report from the, draft report from the work group that was looking at different interventions was presented at the State Board. Dr. Marnerano was able to get us a copy of that report, so we now have it in Student Services, and we're working through the possibilities to see if there are other things that we can be using. Every time a student is suspended from school, they do get a written letter from the school. We're looking to revise that letter so we can specify the contact person. So again, if parents have any question, who do I go to to get the assignments and the work, then that will be specified in that letter as well. And we're looking at that behavioral support programs, again, for the AEP students, and what we can do to provide more services in respect to that. So that's sort of where we are in implementing the changes in COMAR, so that we're ready for this with the, for the next school year. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Rigel. Dr. Marnerano, I would like to give you first choice of making some comments, because obviously there are budget implications here. And since we're right into the budget cycle, just one more thing that we need to be looking at, considering, talking about.
Well, this is a fluid process. I guess you would expect me to say that, in the sense that what my goal was today was to bring all of this forward to you, to identify where the State Board is, what the expectations that this has for us as locals. We still have some work to do regarding our actual Code of Conduct as we look at the next steps from the State Board. And then what we're trying to do is shift our local resources that we have existing, with existing programs, and shift those into the needs that we have within our overall budget. So I'll continue to examine this as we go, making the adjustments in terms of the overall operating budget that we currently have as we isolate that. But I'm pretty confident that we're going to be able to do the majority of this by just shifting our positional focus in what we currently have. So what I'm just trying to say to you is that we're at the initial phases of it. We're presenting you the information right now. In terms of it, Charles will continue to work with us more clearly in terms of identifying additional adjustments we need to make, and then I'll bring that back to the board.
Okay. Dr. Rigel, this is law.
Yes.
Everybody shall, be no wool about it, right? Mr. O'Malley, it shall.
Absolutely. This has been the works for several years, and there's been a lot of back and forth on this, and the State Board has been adamant. They want to decrease the number of suspensions. They want to decrease the amount of time it takes through the suspension expulsion process. They want to decrease the disproportionality and discrepancies. And they want to have very clear reporting on the arrests, and this is part of a larger national effort. You may be aware of the U.S. Department of Education, U.S. Department of Justice's concern about the so-called school-to-prison pipeline. I don't know if we have that in Maryland, and certainly not in St. Mary's County, but that reporting of arrest data is a big part of this. This is not a, you're absolutely right, this is a shall.
Yes.
Another line under the word shall.
Well, it's very important that the community understand the differences, and so many times they don't. And we've already, this school system is already involved in many of these particular changes. We're doing so many things now, but there are other things that we need to be doing to correct, and I'm sure we will do this.
That is true, Dr. Rosebrenner. Mr. O'Malley indicated, we've known for a few years, so we need to be getting ready.
Yes.
And we have been too. I think there's some things that you highlighted that I don't want to gloss over. I think the biggest piece is, is how we have systematically and systemically have shifted to culture again, culture of belief. And the fact is, you quickly went over the fifty-two percent reduction in suspensions. That's significant.
Yeah, I thought so.
You know, where we were when I first arrived here as your superintendent to where we are now, that's a fifty-two percent reduction in that, and that's a whole transformation of our culture and our belief system, but also a major component of that, as I look to see Mr. Smith back there, has been our training of our principals. So anything that we defined as being subjective, so if I were to line up all of you and present you with a case scenario of how you would respond to a child who is persistently disobedient, you would fall out on the continuum in terms of response, because it's subjective. You would take into effect a variety of different factors. There's some that are, fall into categories that are not quite as subjective, they're a little bit more objective. So what may be warrant a disrespect for one student in one school might warrant a suspension, might in the other school warrant a timeout, based upon training. So what we've tried to do is be very, very clear about our training and our expectation on areas of subjective, where opinion can get involved with it, and at the level of consistency, so that we're not jumping to suspension as the first option. What are those progressive discipline areas that lead to it? Because you start suspending a child from school, it starts unraveling all the pieces that lead to dropout. Less time on task, less engagement, all of those things start adding up exponentially, and we know that. So we want to provide alternative environments to keep students engaged. I mean, if we had an abundance amount of money, there'd be a variety of other programs that we could do as well, because I am not a proponent of putting a young person out. I recognize that we have to do certain things to make certain there's order in our schools, that there's a level of accountability. But when you're thinking from a child-centered perspective, and I think that's what the overall goal is of this document, is to review how and why we do business, and to keep more young people in school with alternative programs, because we know, again, as I'm repeating myself because of the importance of it, that I'm not a supporter of putting children out for the sake of just putting them out for disciplinary, and there has to be some controls on that and clear expectations, because we recognize the instructional implications that occur as that child falls further and further behind. And so when we have a graduation rate of ninety-one point five percent and a reduction in our suspensions, that's very important data, because more children now are engaged in meaningful curriculum. It's a whole nother philosophy too, in theory of thought, that children come to school bored because they're engaging in programs that don't meet their needs, they need to have a variety of choice-based programs to keep students engaged. So why do we have the Forest Center and Twenty-four offerings and the Apex programs and the Fairlead Academy? All of these are based upon keeping students fully engaged with their interests, and when that child finds that interest, it becomes a more meaningful experience for them to stay engaged. So there's responsibility on the students' part, as well as our part, but as a board, what's our philosophical belief? That we want children staying in school, being involved in a, engaged in a rich curriculum, but also, again, to whom much is given, much is expected, a young person needs to know what the rules are and if they're going to be held accountable, so that involvement in certain activities will warrant a suspension, but quickly, in terms of, from my philosophy of education, I don't even like to use the word discipline, because I like to have aspect of accountability and then the aspect of education, to prevent that behavior from happening again, and involve it at the early levels. So there's a lot of our similar philosophies embedded in this, and we've made some of the necessary adjustments as well. But I think it's important for this board to know that we've been dealing with this for several years, and as you attack all these other variables, what gets measured gets done, we've been very focused on making certain young people remaining in school with alternatives, and then also managing and recognizing the need for the classroom teacher, because there can be students in the schools and in the classrooms that disrupt others. What do we do in those places? So it's not always a perfect science, but very artfully done in the sense of taking into account the needs of each young person and a plan to address that with progressive discipline, alternatives, and then also empowering the teacher to make decisions as well and providing the support from the administrator. So a lot in motion here, but I'm very pleased with the philosophy of belief that we're not just putting young people out on the street for the sake of putting them out for long periods of time. That does no one any good, and every time I do those long-term suspensions, I'm asking what is the, what is the alternative program we're engaging in, whether it's home and hospital teaching to keep that instructional piece going? hospital teaching to keep that instructional piece going? And I'll have to make another plug for this as well. A very meaningful part of that is the online curriculum usage of Apex, which we have just been tremendously successful with in terms of the benefits of the online curriculum and opportunities to recover and maintain where they need to be. So lots of words associated with this, but it conveys the philosophy of this school system and this board about what we believe in young people.
Thank you. Okay, board members, comments, questions? Mrs. Allen?
Thank you for bringing this forward. It is, it has been a discussion at MAB, long and, and at times loud. I think the goals that the state board has put forward are quite admirable. I'm really pleased by the fact that St. Mary's County has never practiced a zero tolerance policy with respect to discipline and accountability. We've always believed in a continuum of discipline, a layered approach, using common sense and, and really looking at the big picture. And, and we've practiced that well. The professional development that the board has supported, both from a philosophical standpoint, but as, but economically as well, because there is, there is a fairly large price tag associated with that professional development, and yet it's crucial to what we are, are doing. And while what the state board has brought forward is admirable in its goal, the concern at MAB and amongst board members across the state has been the implementation and the state board's absolute resistance to input provided by a number of the stakeholders. MAB has consistently put forward areas of concern with respect to the very imprecise language that's contained in this. They, they interchange terms constantly, and, and they use terms in ways that have not been done before. I think one of the biggest concerns MAB has had is their continuing language and insistence in language in students who are expelled being allowed to return to their regular program. And always it has been up to the superintendent to make a determination as to where that student will go once they are returned to the school system after an expulsion or a long-term suspension. And the idea that one student can victimize another in a way that is harmful, and then by the language in the document that the state board has put forward, be allowed and expected to return to their original program, which we understand to be or take to be their school, is, is victimizing the person all over again. And when MAB has put forward this great concern, the state board read a letter of response at a state board meeting. They didn't even have a discussion about it. They simply read a letter that said, in essence, "Well, that's not what we meant." But that's what you said, but that's not what we meant. So how this is going to be implemented and how the state board is going to hear cases across the state based on the language in this is of significant ongoing concern to MAB and certainly to me. Still to come, the Code of Conduct. I have seen it. As you say, it's not a public document, but there are concerns within there as well, and, and how that's going to come forward, and how that interacts with these discipline changes. The, the piece that was put forward by the U.S. Department of Education and the Department of Justice, the folks at MAB have said is basically a MapQuest roadmap to how to sue. And, and I think that's going to also have a significant impact on, on school systems across the state. You know, I, I think you have done everything you can to be proactive in having this ready. Most of the school systems across the state have not done anything along these lines, and so they are looking to have to, and they're waiting until the Code of Conduct report comes before, and there's one other, and I'm blanking on...
Best practices?
It may be best practices that still have to come forward.
We've received some of that, and we've got, I've given it to the committee.
Right, but they, but as those come forward, it's almost as though school systems, some of the school systems in the state are waiting until June to make these changes, and when most of us have a setup whereby a policy is brought forward for initial consideration, a public hearing, and then going for a final vote, you're talking about six weeks or more. And this, I know a lot of this information will need to go into our student handbook, and, and that has to be printed ahead of time, so...
We're on a tight deadline for that.
We are on a tight deadline. I think that, that as, as you have always done in the past, we are well-positioned, as well as we can be positioned, to be ready to implement this and have it communicated to students, parents, and staff alike prior to the first day of school. I, I just continue to have concerns about what the state board has been doing over the last few years in terms of, here's what our rules are, but we're going to judge a case not based on what our rules are, what our, what COMAR says, but what we wish we'd done previously. So it really is a moving target, and, and it's very problematic, and they don't seem to be responding to reasoned and thoughtful arguments about what they've put forward. But as long as our school system is doing what we believe is right, in terms of our values, our expectations for students, that all students can and will learn, I think that's important. The additional language they've put in with respect to us providing services to students, and services that we've never provided before, that, that there may be a significant cost to us in terms of if we have to provide psychological or psychiatric services to students that may or may not be available in St. Mary's County, that is, that's something we're going to have to, to determine how exactly that's going to happen, and we have to be prepared for the fact that there's going to be a significant cost, both, both economic and, and just in terms of how people react to this.
It'll be interesting how the county commissioners will deal with this when all these things come on down, because I could see right now, and all of us can, that the budget on this is going to just go out of sight, because a lot of these cases are going to wind up in courts.
Right.
Yes. It, it has the potential to. I, you know, I would, after everyone has their comments, I'd also like to hear from Mr. O'Malley, because I, I know that Mr. O'Malley has been involved in this, and, and he and his associates have, have weighed in, but I think you probably also have great insight on the impact to us as a school system and to this board, as well as to those across the state, and I'd like to hear from, I'd like to hear from him on that, if, if that meets with the chair's approval, so.
Yes, by all means. I, I think that we'll give the other board members an opportunity to speak first, and then, Mr. O'Malley, I'll give you time to sum up at the end.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you, Dr. Rigel, for giving a great presentation. Our students cannot learn if they are not in school or involved in an alternative learning environment. This is more proactive and progressive than reactive. It allows for flexibility and attempts to keep students in school, keep them in a learning environment, and teach them appropriate behaviors. The key is to change the inappropriate behavior to appropriate behavior. Keeping students in school, teaching them appropriate behaviors and expectations, which hopefully, which hopefully trains them to become responsible and contributing members of society. Professional development is key for school and classroom management, and recognizing and responding appropriately to inappropriate behavior. Years went into looking at this issue, and this is a statewide initiative, to continue the learning, to know the learner, and to have a plan to keep students in a learning environment. This is a great initiative to provide consistency statewide, and there will be challenges. It is better to deal with these issues while our students are young, rather than when they are seasoned adults. There will be a cost, but it will be more cost-effective to pay now for our students rather than later as adults for a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mr. Matthews?
Dr. Rigel, thank you. Very thorough. You did a great job. I see firsthand how we're starting so young with the diner dollars, and it's just setting the benchmark, and it's teaching them young, and it's, we're moving in the right path. The state board indicated that their goal should be to improve the student. I think it's our goal that we will improve the student. All of our data points are pointing in the right direction. We just need to keep moving forward, and, you know, Mr. O'Malley will keep us straight on the legalese part. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mrs. Crosby?
As far as zero tolerance goes, when I swam at the drill hall every other day before probably just about everybody's time here, I met a young man who was a really nice young man. I won't go into his job, because I don't want to identify him. And we were just talking, and he says, "I'm out of school." I said, "Well, why are you out of school?" He said, "Well, they were out with a dog looking for marijuana, and they found fireworks in my trunk, and that's why I'm out of school. Can't get back in." I went to myself, to the superintendent at the time, which was a long time ago, they would not even entertain it. Okay, so that was, I would call that zero tolerance in that instance. Okay, my questions are, here's something that's really good, reducing the number of out-of-school suspensions by using interventions. I think that's terrific. And by the way, you did do a great job on this. Second, it says, and here's my question, eliminating in-school suspensions and adopting an in-school intervention model. Would you distinguish between the two of those, please?
In-school intervention model, we began four years ago. This is our fourth, well, this is our fourth year, so three and a half. It used to be considered a suspension because the students were out of the classroom, they were not getting that full instruction. Now they go to the in-school intervention room, they're assigned there for whatever number of days. The assignments from the classroom teachers and the instruction and all are delivered in that room.
And there's a teacher there.
In the intervention room with the teacher. There's a par educator, there's a teacher assigned as well, there is a special educator assigned to work with the students who have IEPs, the counselors, the school counselor knows what students and so forth, so they can again provide that support and all to them. So it's not a suspension, it's an intervention now.
It's not where they just put them in a room and supervise them in awards. That is absolutely terrific, and then it brings me to the next thing. You're right, it's going to cost more money, unless we have it all employed and we haven't had to use any more people. I can't imagine that's true.
Well, we've made our adjustments along the way. I mean, we're doing some of these already, and I want to address another thing that was implied in your comment, is that the goal is to keep young people in school.
Right.
And so everything that Dr. Rigel just said is, is accurate and fine, and that's how we want that to be, but for certain offenses.
Yeah.
So that doesn't qualify, because you talked about zero tolerance.
Yes.
So if a young person were to bring in a weapon...
Yes.
...or firearms, or anything associated with that...
Fireworks.
Fireworks, all those things fall into other categories of breaking the law as well, reportable offenses, concerns force in terms of the criminal piece of it, arrests could be involved, all those things, and that has a higher level, so a young person would not necessarily be put in an intervention program for that in, in that sense. So this would be for those issues that, when I was talking about subjectivity, it allows us, that training component has to occur, and issues that maybe some people would put children out for, for suspensions, we now have opportunities for them to remain in school. And in an ideal world, that's what we want.
That's good.
But when you start going into the other categories of categories where they're breaking the law, and they're major issues, that whole zero tolerance piece kicks in, and you really have to make a strong case for a mitigation, in, in terms of a mitigating factor. For example, if a child accidentally brings in a cigarette lighter, and it's, you know, he was wearing his father's coat, well, that's explained. But if a young person brings a cigarette lighter in with the intent to set off the smoke alarms, that's a whole different issue. Every now and then we'll have a young person, it's, it's a whole thing of common sense about the, the Pop-Tart guns, you know, and things like that that gets, you know, attention, you know, using common sense, but is it a look-alike? No, it's not a look-alike. That's something that we take under consideration. So you have to have the intervention of supervision and training, so anything, any time there's any of those considerations, this is again, like the, the story of the Three Bears again, we're just right. We have a level of intimacy in our community, a level of intimacy in our school district when these kind of offenses could occur. There's communication with Ms. Hall, with Mr. Smith, with myself, with Mr. Wyatt, with Mr. Clements, as we're helping principals make the right decision regarding that. So we're making good common sense decisions, holding young people accountable, putting individuals in the in-school suspension areas, that offenses that would warrant that, but also, what I don't want to give the, the impression is that any offense that young person is going to be remaining in school because we have an in-school suspension. There are still violations in the Code of Conduct that I've just defined as the, the bigger ones, that I usually use in my mind, that things are against the law as well, breaking the law and would involve an arrest that would warrant an out-of-school suspension, that we would not necessarily engage in an in-school suspension option.
Yeah, thank you. And I had just one more thing. I noticed as I kept going through these, it kept saying threat to self, threat to self, I mean, threat to others, threat to others, threat to others. Well, sometimes kids are a threat to themselves, and we, there's nothing about that there, and we almost need not just a psychologist, a psychiatrist, and I don't know how we're going to take care of threats to self.
But we, we engage in a series of, and see, that's the thing, you know, when we were talking yesterday at the budget hearing when I was making the case for the psychologist, when you have a school system that is growing, and for all intents and purposes, I keep saying 18,000, we have nine psychologists, do your math, nine divided by 18,000 is 2,000 students. Our ratio is 1 to 2,000. Unacceptable. Our counseling ratio, I, I want you to get that accurate data for me and what the standards are, I have that in my files, but that's extremely high, 1 to 400, 500 students, you know, in terms of caseloads. So if, when there's great concern about the mental responses, in terms of mental health responses, that's an area of our school system that's greatly in concern. We've spent great time about class size, and I brought this to your attention, but the fact is, right now, there's great conversation about drug use, issues in terms of response to mental illness, because our young people come to us with a variety of different concerns that we have to respond to, and it, it does involve a psychologist. We have what's called threat assessment. Is it going to be a threat to him or herself and to others? We have a whole battery of assessments that we work to provide alternative placements. So it's a very, you know, these are the things that oftentimes community members don't understand, but we don't have the kind of capacity as a school system where we have those programs in our community. So oftentimes, even when we're talking in Mrs. Charbonne's area, what is defined as non-public placement, there are, when we go through the identification process and this, a student presents him or herself on the continuum of needing additional support, our school system can't always provide those. So when we talk about the non-public placements, that's when we have to send them to alternative programs to receive that support. We provide the support for that because we can't do any further services, and that, that's a whole piece of Melissa's budget in that sense. So such is the case in terms of response to mental illness, the, the need for the psychologist, our doing our own threat assessment, so all of this is all interrelated. It goes back to sort of the response to the drugs. How do we deal with this? But to throw... But to throw an individual, and I know that's crass language, and I'm trying to make a point, to just to throw a student out on the street for the sake of suspension is not the solution.
No.
I mean, I think right now, there's a case in Virginia with the former elected official whose son attacked him and then turned around and committed suicide, that whole conversation that there was not a bed available, he needed, you know, support in a mental facility, mental health facility, and that bed wasn't available. And so great conversations about this. Anytime there is a shooting that involves an issue, what were the signs? And are we equipped? So we recognize that as a society, individuals have challenges in terms of both physical and mental illness, and it should not be viewed as anything of an embarrassment or concern, it's no different than when you have a pain in your arm. It's no different than that. We have to be able to respond to that in terms of prevention and treatment and a variety of other issues with it. And the identification early on, when a child is experiencing and exhibiting certain tendencies, that we want to provide the help and support, but I'm going to inform the board one more time, it's the whole aspect of resources. We are very thinly supported in our issues of PPWs, our psychologists, and our guidance counselors. Hooray for our class size, hooray for our teachers, hooray for that, we're very proud. We want to keep that. But we also recognize that if our teachers don't have the supports of individuals they can provide, turn the young people over to in the schools, and the caseload is one to two thousand, and one to four hundred for a counselor, that's really hard to provide a meaningful intervention that's necessary. So all of this is embedded, not just in terms of the perfunctory kind of administrative responses, we're always looking symptomatically at how do we prevent, and what do we do to intervene along the way? Because I think, Mrs. Washington, you talked about it, you know, it's sort of that ounce of prevention, you know, versus a pound, however that goes, you know, in response to it, pay now or pay later. It's the whole thing, I can talk to you about our per pupil expenditure being the lowest in the state, twenty-four out of twenty-four, at approximately twelve thousand dollars, and a five thousand dollar differential between us and the number one Worcester in Baltimore City. Uh, but, you know, think about all of those in terms of dollars, where, you know, where we are and how all that plays out and what we can do with the infusion of more. It's, it's, it's very disconcerting, you know, when we're trying to balance all this and provide the necessary response. I add that to the conversation.
Thank you.
May I say something?
Sure.
And also, we need to continue to work with our partners, seeing the county.
Absolutely.
We have NAMI, National Association of Mental Illness, and it's free, it's a volunteer group, they're willing to help. So they say that one out of four people suffer from some form of mental illness.
Absolutely.
So we have eighteen thousand students, they are people and they have issues as well, and we need to bring mental illness out of the closet and bring it up front, that if students are displaying these behaviors, that our teachers are trained through professional development to recognize them. Someone was talking about, why do they have so many professional days? It's too many. What are they doing? We do things like that, train teachers, everybody, from building service workers to everyone about warning signs, what to look for in our students, so we can prevent a major tragedy from happening in our schools, that we are the ones who are on national news, because things can happen to anybody, anybody, it's, you know, it's not the poor.
You don't know.
It's the rich, it's the poor, it's race, it's religion, it's people have problems. So if we ever have that summit on drugs for students, we can have some of our members from the mental health community to come in, to have a display table, to talk about mental issues and behavior issues, and psychologists and psychiatrists, and even in the county. I think we only have maybe one.
Two psychiatrists in the whole county.
In the county, it's hard to get psychiatrists in the southern, in St. Mary's County so fast that try to get them for the school, it'd be really tough.
It's difficult, I mean, it's a hot commodity, so go back to that per pupil expenditure, where we are at twelve thousand, but then what's it cost to incarcerate an individual is approximately thirty-five thousand. So you think about that, and then if you also look at the, the issues in terms of, I've got all the information on the pipeline to prison, read about that constantly, you know, and the fact when we talk about the issue of we want every child to succeed, not fail, we know that pipeline to prison, if a child drops out of school and fails, the percentage is so high for a young person who does that to end up in the detention center. And so you look at two factors, and if my good friend Tim Cameron were here, he'd talk about the level of need for intervention for mental health response because of the concern in the prison population, the number of young, the people that show up there who have dropped out of school, and all of those issues, and let's tie in the other prong of this, individuals who engage in drug use can also trigger a response that exacerbates mental illness development as well, schizophrenia, paranoia, increased levels of anxiety. So this is just, you're on a real slippery slope if you're not on that right path, because all those paths lead to just all kinds of issues, and then putting this into proper words, if that's not addressed, all the dollars are spent in terms of response as opposed to front-loading it. So why do you think we talk about pre-K interventions, reading, keeping children successful, providing the right levels of support? Because if all those factors aren't there, then as a community, when that reaches a tipping point, you're spending lots of dollars in terms of response and reaction. The other piece tied into this is how it's been codified and put into dollar amounts, that when the more dropout you have, the loss of revenue to a community, I mean, there's a report out there that talks about the revenue pieces of it, and it really beautifully done. And when you think about the factors of non-productive ways of operating in society, and our responses of just the fact is, of responding to that. So I appreciate the wonderful, rich dialogue on this. Again, it's not a silver bullet, it's all of this connected together, and it ties in with the issues of responses to drug use, et cetera. Very similar stuff. So thank you, continue.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Crosby.
Oh, thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Peter.
Thank you. And I wanted to say, I've been in the school system since fourth grade elementary school, and each year, at least that I can remember, at the beginning of the school year, within the first week, even the first day of school, the first day of instruction, one of the first things we do when we get to class and get to school is go through that handbook, through the code of conduct that explains the, the rules and the consequences of our actions in schools. And with that, we have that first talk about the code of conduct, and then, this is more in the high school, we have that first with usually a teacher, and then we have a second assembly with our principals and administrators and guidance counselors as well to reinforce the, the code of conduct with that, and going from a student's perspective with students that go through, that have administrative actions that would lead usually to a suspension, having even three or four days out of school can, can just really ruin that entire quarter or that entire semester of work for the student, missing a couple days of any level, going from AP, which, missing three days from AP, or higher level class could definitely be detrimental to your education, but to even your CM level courses or your standard level two, missing those days, it, it really sets you off the path of, of getting those good grades and passing those classes. And with that, missing those days, not passing the classes, Dr. Rana mentioned this earlier, leads to, you could end up failing a course.
Right.
And speaking of just the three to four days, having eleven days can just really ruin your, your, your grades, and, and with that, that leads to people not passing the courses, and which leads to discouragement, which can lead, like you said, a big factor of people dropping out of schools, and that's what we really don't want to have. And with us having a ninety-one point five graduation rate, programs like Apex and ISI, the in-school interventions, those are, I've, and I know people personally who I, who I talk to who use those programs, and with ISI, it allows students to be able to be in the school environment, be at the school's location in a separate location from the other classrooms, but to be able to, if they need to, they can, they'll still be at the location to talk to the teachers, get their work. If they have questions before or after school, the programs slightly after the teacher will be, will be there at the location to, to talk and interact with the student, and to intervene, which is the in-school intervention, instead of being out of school for the suspension. And that's really the make or break point between the suspensions and being out of school and not having the teachers there and not having the work and the quality versus being in the school still, if you're not with the other students in a classroom necessarily in your normal schedule, but you're still at the school being able to learn. And that's, that's, that's really what makes a difference.
And add your last prong to that, to make it a complete observation, and you've done wonderful, but we also have to provide support to the classroom teacher, because we recognize the disruption factor that can occur for just one student, I'm sure you witnessed that, in the time that that takes away from all the other young people. So as we proceed, we've got to have a balance with all of this to make certain that there are interventions and supports and alternatives for the young person, but also for the other twenty students that remain in the classroom too, because one student, I've been there, can monopolize and dominate the attention of the teacher and disrupt the whole classroom if not dealt with properly. So we've got to find that balance, and then also continue to provide training to our staff, because not all of our teachers are at the same place with this too, as I said with our administrators. I'll give you an example, when I was an elementary principal, a teacher, was a couple of years into her teaching, still not at the level of high tenure yet, and came to me on the first day of school with a kindergarten child in tow and said, "Dr. Materano, I'm tired of this child, first day of school, I want him suspended." And I said, "Okay, so the first day of school, we have a hundred and seventy-nine left, a kindergarten child, he's crying and he's a handful," and I said, "Why?" "Because he's so immature." So, I mean, this is honest to goodness, and I said, pulled her aside and said, "What do we expect of five-year-olds in terms of the maturity level on the first day to begin with?" And then having to work with that teacher to understand a different level of progressiveness in terms of that. But if, if I would have been the kind of principal at that time that may have been like my, some of my colleagues, that would say, "I agree, let's put him out, no tolerance," what would have happened to that child? The child was upset, he missed his mother, he was acting out, the developmental pieces of separation anxiety kicked in. Putting my counseling hat on, knew that, gave him a timeout, sat there and provided a little love and attention, and then got him back on his way. It was, it was a rough day, first day of school, Misty's mom, riding the big bus, all these big people, and now I'm in the principal's office the first day with a teacher who says suspend me? So there's, everybody's got a role in this, and we have to be very aware of everybody's role and everybody's concern and find that balance so that the pendulum doesn't go so far, and we have to have that great conversation. That's why we couldn't have had this conversation, board members of the night, that we were going to have this discussion. I'm so encouraged by this. So continue, please.
And with that, just kind of to wrap it up, with the programs, and Apex helps very much as well for students that, that are out of school and who, who miss the classes and need that extra instruction, and it really is a program that, and I've, I used it in my freshman year, I believe, I used this program very, Apex wasn't out as much yet then, I used this program very similar for concept-based physics class that I had very, it very troubled me very much, with other students too, and that made the world of, a world of a difference, raising my grade from a D to a B the next quarter, and that, that was something for me that really, that really helped in, in raising the education level. And for people who missed the classes and missed the courses and can't go back to those classes because they were out of school or they were in ISI, it helps a lot. And the, thank you, Dr. Ridgell, for, for going through all this, and it really does make honestly the world of a difference, just the one program it can have on, not just the immediate course of that week or that month for instruction, but in the long run, it could be determining factor of whether a child drops out of school or not, or one of my classmates, and that, it, it really does help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Asma.
Thank you, Peter. Mrs. Washington, you have a question.
Um, Dr. Ridgell, what is the status of the behavior centers, and how does this fit in with this plan?
The behavior centers at.
Elementary schools?
The behavior centers at the elementary school have also changed to the in-school intervention centers.
Okay, okay, all right.
Very proud that we offered that staff.
Elementary, middle, and high made the shift three and a half years ago.
Okay, so it's not called the BMC anymore?
It's not called the BMC anymore.
I still regress to it, but when in doubt, I know it's not.
Thank you, Dr. Ridgell.
Mr. Omele, it's your turn.
Okay. Well, I've been involved in this process for several years now, and we could see this developing as early as two thousand and nine with a decision by the State Board coming out of a long-term student suspension in Dorchester County, and they indicated that they were going to begin reviewing student suspensions with a much more critical eye than they traditionally had in the past. I think that if every county in Maryland was like St. Mary's County, we probably would not be where we are today. But there's a great level of divergence with respect to how school systems treat individual student conduct, and as Dr. Materano mentioned, we have those anecdotes with respect to the pop tart gun and whatnot. That's not the kind of thing that we would see in this county, I would expect. But be that as it may, I've been involved with the MAVE Attorneys Group for the last couple of years, where we've reviewed the proposed regulations, we've drafted comments, raised questions, and, you know, the, the regulations have now been issued. So one thing I, I should point out is that the State Board is not only a policymaking body, but it's an appellate body, as you all know. The State Board makes decisions that have the full force and effect of law, and so when the State Board says in response to questions, "Well, that's not what we mean," I think that's an indication, wait for the first couple of cases, hopefully from another county, where we will see the State Board interpreting its regulations. Those interpretations have the full force and effect of law, they become case law. And so the State Board is fairly unique in that respect, and they publish all of their decisions on their website, and so we can all view those decisions and take lessons from them. Still, I think every county in the state of Maryland is going to have to do certain things, and in particular, those school systems that have school resource officers, as we have here, there's going to be a need of, for more coordination and more training. And for the last ten years or so, I've been doing in-services at the Maryland State Police Training Academy for SROs on school discipline issues, searches and whatnot. One of the things that the KMAO regs provide is that while police should be called in to arrest students for, quote, "delinquent behavior," end quote, the very next sentence says, "When that behavior can be addressed in the school, it should be," rather than having the student arrested. And we see in cases from the State Board of Education where students have committed crimes. One case in particular where student, a student had several knives in school, student was arrested, student was suspended, the State Board said, "You overreacted, you needed to look at why the student had the knives." And the student had the knives for the purpose of working on his lacrosse stick. Now, that may be a question of, of credible evidence, whether you believe that response or not, in this particular case, it was credible, but there we go into looking at aggravating and mitigating circumstances, something that we have to do in every case. And so we know from some of the pop tart gun examples that that's not always done in every case in every school system in the state of Maryland. We need to put common sense back into the equation.
Exactly, exactly.
All right. So among the things that the State Board is saying that we need to do, we need to have some education on cultural proficiency, because what the State Board is noting with respect to disproportionality is that some students are being suspended for things that teachers and principals are taking as inappropriate behavior, but it's the lack of awareness of the cultural proficiency that is leading to the suspension. There needs to be some education there. We know that there's going to be challenges for the classroom teachers who will have students returned to the classroom sooner than may have occurred in the past. We know there are going to be challenges to boards of education because due to the tightened timeframe, you're going to be seeing more appeals and having more evidentiary hearings at the board level than you've had in the past. That's all part of this process of rendering decisions in a timely manner, and as Dr. Materano said, we're. And as Dr. Materano said, we're going to need to have more threat assessments. Because part of the regulation is that as part of the consideration process for a extended suspension, a long-term removal beyond 10 days, we have to make a determination of whether the student's conduct poses an imminent threat of harm. It's not enough to say, "What he did was wrong," past tense. We have to look prospectively. Is he likely to repeat it? Is he likely to cause further harm? Is his presence in the school going to create a further disruption? And we have to also factor into this the impact on other students. Because we know, for example, in the harassment and bullying cases, the return of a student who has been the cause of harassment and bullying may have an impact on the victim of the harassment and bullying. One of the things that we've had a lot of concern about, as Mrs. Allen mentioned, is the language saying, "Return to his regular program." I, I'm going to go out on a limb a little bit, and I'm going to say that program and setting are not the same thing. That's well-established in special education law, that a program is beyond the place where the program is administered. And I think that we're still going to have a little bit of flexibility.
And we've challenged that at superintendents. I mean, we, we've put our letter forward and we've got the, the language that we need back to maintain that level of flexibility. And so, but what we got concerned about was that level of just direct sort of prescriptive, directive, I should say, that says there's no latitude with that. We need to retain that, keeping the child's interest, recognizing the overall picture. But that's been advanced.
I think it's more to do, in some ways, with the fact that the membership of the state board is ever-changing.
Yes.
And what this particular group means, what their conversation was, what their intent was. Will the language support and carry that through so that a board looking at a, an issue coming before them, an appeal coming before them 10 years from now, 12 years from now, are they going to make the same decision, given the language, as the current board would? And that's, that's what comes into question.
We'll have to keep on it, there's no question about it. But again, you have to understand the genesis of why we're here, why did they respond, and a variety of issues. The cases in Virginia as well.
Right.
Were predicated on the fact that long-term suspension, the child then was automatically moved to another high school. And that led to some severe psychological responses, in some cases, to suicide.
Yes.
And that was a case. We've had some real bell ringer events in, in our state that I, and I really appreciate Mr. Omeili advancing the fact of, again, common sense execution of that kind of discipline and having people around you. What you have is a really good team of decision-makers here that aren't afraid to question each other in terms of it, and providing the support to principals and teachers during those processes so that we aren't in a position where a position, a stance has been made and it, it just isn't right in that sense. It goes back to the example of back in the 90s when sexual harassment really came strong onto the scene, you know, policies advanced, et cetera, and people went to the extreme on that. And young kindergarteners being suspended for kissing another student because of, it was defined as sexual harassment. What do young kids do? They're very, you're learning your limits and your bound, your boundaries, and you know that, you know, you shouldn't be, we say you shouldn't be hugging and kissing and touching, but they're affectionate. That's what they do. So where's the balance with that? Because a young child hugged another one and kissed him, is that sexual harassment should be put out for five days? No. That gives public education, education in general, a bad name in that sense. So we've got to monitor each other, we've got to make sure we're doing this correctly and striking that balance, as I keep saying.
I agree with all those comments. And, you know, I, I think there's going to be a learning period here.
Exactly.
And, but ultimately, you know, I've been taking cases before the state board for 26 years, and I think some, some basic rules generally produce the good results. Provide more due process early rather than later. Provide fundamental fairness. Use common sense. Don't be arbitrary. Don't put one-size-fits-all punishments. And by and large, the state board will uphold the local board.
Yeah. But I think, I think it's important, let's swing to the category for you as board members. So an event occurs in a school, and communications occur, young person's held accountable. Say it's one of these ones that really goes off track. Then there's an appeal process here, and we're sticking to our guns and following that through. And from the average outsider, it may be this is not what should be done. But then there's another layer. You have an opportunity to weigh in too, in terms of the appeal process. And so I feel real good about that because the fact is that we always make the right decision for our schools, for our students, for our teachers, but we also have to think about the litigious nature of issues. And when it comes to you, do I put you in a position that's not necessarily being able to support? So the decisions that are made here are clearly, and, and we, we do the best that we can. I'm not saying we're perfect. But the fact is, we don't have many appeals. And where we can mitigate locally, where we can respond and maintain that balance, we do. So I'm not here saying that we're perfect, but there is a system set up where we challenge each other's decision-making in the best interest of the classroom, the best interest of the child, and the best interest of moving that, the overall program forward for the educational experience to be positive and optimal for every child.
I think that over the years, in all my experiences as a disciplinarian, the vice-principal, the principal, I've noticed that we've gotten away in this society, not St. Mary's County, but society in general, in this great country of ours, with all the Supreme Court decisions that have come down. And we've gotten away, it seems like, two things, fairness and common sense. And we have many cases around us, even in Maryland, and some of the other states that are close to us that we, we read about, pop guns and that young man played lacrosse. Somebody like me sits back, and I look at my experiences, and so does Dr. Materano, because he sat in the same seats and has done the same, have done the same things. And I just shake my head. What is this? What happened to common sense? Because I reflect that there was a time in the schools, in the shops, okay, back in 1961, when the students came off the buses with their rifles and shotguns and went down to the shop, and they worked the stocks. And some of those young people were artists. I mean, you should see how they could work with wood, unbelievable. Nobody said a word. Because there was nothing to say about it. It was a part of society, it was a part of life. And then when they left the shop, you know, it stayed in the shop and the lockers, and then when they went home, they picked up their particular shotgun or rifle and got back on the bus. And, and they worked. You've had the same situation up in the...
One too long ago where corporal punishment was in place and witnessing, you know, students getting paddled and all kinds of stuff.
Can you imagine today?
There's some states that are trying to bring it back.
Pennsylvania still has a corporal punishment statute.
Yeah. But however, and I was just reading the other day, where was it, in Indiana, on that daily administrative piece that we, we get, where in Indiana, that the legislature passed that it would be legal to have guns in your car in school parking lots. Now, that's a complete turnaround of what has been going on in this country, and we all read. So you begin wondering, what is really taking place in our society?
So, Dr. Rasputin, no decision is made in isolation. That's what you're saying here as well.
Yes.
When you're taking into account safety, you have to think very broadly. That's why I'm trying to bring things back to your conversation about the drug summit. There's a lot of interconnections and interrelated pieces. You know, we've sat up here many a day and talked about safety, you know, and what we need to do, but then people do things that are counterintuitive to that. Because, so we have to maintain a balance of all of these different issues and not just think in isolation as we're executing our policies and implementation, et cetera. So great conversation, really good.
Thank you, Mr. Omeili, for your comments.
Thank you.
Dr. Rigel, I'm sure that we will hear more of you on this particular, the topic coming up here in the months to follow. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And any additional fiscal notes on this? Bring to our attention that you think as, as we're evolving, I mean, you have just great communication here, but to explicitly define that to the board as we come forward, but what we've been doing the last several years to make our adjustments with what we currently have as well. So thank you, Charles. Wonderful. Dr. Rigel.
Okay, moving on. Financial report, Mr. Norris.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple of things on the revenue side. We have sent in our OPEB payment to...
MAVE.
To MAVE. I wanted to say MSD, and I couldn't remember what the other one was. So we have sent that into MAVE, and the county has sent in their portion too. It's a little over $5 million. Remember, when the county approved the budget last time, they said that any money left over in health insurance was to go to OPEB. That was a little over $90,900 that we had left in that account. So you're just a little over $5 million that's been sent into MAVE for our OPEB payment. We have also made three payments for the state pension, and that's reimbursable with the county. So they have reimbursed us that $2.3 million we paid first, they reimburse us after. So we do have one more final payment, and then we'll get reimbursed for that too. So those are the two big things that occurred here in March, which you will see in your March reports, so let me have that too. Otherwise, just about everything is where it should be in terms of revenues. You see one zero down here in terms of the evening high tuition. That's really coming up here with the Apex and summer school. And in fact, your evening high tuition has gone away in your FY 2015 budget because it's been replaced by the other programs. We're still awaiting some additional money down here for ImpactAid. We should be getting some more money here in the March-April timeframe. And of course, you know, the Department of Defense money, even though we appropriated for FY 14, it won't come in until end of June, beginning of July. So we just set up a receivable for that too. So that's basically what's happening. Also on the ROTC, because of the program loss, that's been adjusted for FY 15 too. So that's why you see that's a little bit under. But overall, we're very good on the revenue side. Couple of things that have come up since the last time that we met. On the expenditure side, you can see that we have two negative numbers for administration on salary and wages and on contracted services on the salary and wages. That is a combination of two factors. That is our hiring of the deputy to the assistant superintendent to replace me. While we will have to cover that as part of the FY 14 expenses, with my leaving and, and Ms. McCork coming on, that'll be a wash in terms of anything that we have to do in '15. And up here in terms of contracted services, that's some additional contract services through Abacus for HR, and that will go away as of June 30th, so that you should be fine. You do have some extra money in the budget for '15, which we'll be able to now take out to make that change for administration. Down here under other instructional costs, the contracted services, that is the money you have, I'm sorry, you have in your budget, I believe, it's what, $149,000 to pay for the, or it's $114,000, for the OMB fiber. This is our payment for FY 14 that we didn't plan on for our portion of the fiber program. And so you are fully budgeted in FY 15 for that, but that's what that is. So we did have to go through and make that payment, and that's been taken care of for now. Lasting down here, in terms of contracted services from special education, that's, you've seen that now for three or four months. And so we will have that as part of our categorical in May. And then down here again with the healthcare, this is the transformation of the two LPNs to RNs. That is in the FY 15 budget along with two additional anticipated changes from LPNs to RNs, just so that we have money in there budgeted for that too. So that's what's going on there. In terms of student transportation, operation of plant, and maintenance of plant, you don't see anything there. We should be okay. The one thing here in operation of plant, just to give you a heads-up, is that we are still working on the cost for the snow and the electricity and those kinds of things. Remember, we did cut the electricity budget as part of the FY 14 budget. So we will have to put that money back. It is in your FY 15 budget, but we will have that as part, right now it's not showing because we're still fine, but we're okay, you know, we're okay there for now. And then, on fixed charges? While there's nothing that's indicated there in terms of a status, I must tell you that we will be over-expanding our group health insurance category here. We have a number of things that are going on with additional costs. We are meeting with Care First next week to discuss our FY 14 expenditures and their recommendations for FY 15. We are on your April schedule, your day meeting, to go over their report with you. And we will be back to you with briefing Dr. Materano with regards to our findings, and then we'll be back to you with a board update, just so you know that that'll be coming.
And, and let me comment further there. I mean, "I continue to be challenged and stressed," are the words regarding all things associated with healthcare. All things associated with it. You saw the additional costs that we had to build in for the Affordable Care Act to the tune, was that $60?
$63 per person.
$63 per person, you know, what, what that does. The volatility of the rates, the variables that are out of our control in terms of catastrophic illnesses, the, the, how we're projecting the costs versus pay-go, trying to balance all of this out. And it continues to be a dominant discussion point on an ongoing basis in the school system, how we manage and monitor, and then variables that are out of our control, and then how we reconcile that at the end. You know, I, you've heard me talk about this throughout the budget process, how some of these areas just dominate our budget discussion and the lack of true flexibility to deliver programs on behalf. So we're looking at $20 to $25 million for all intents and purposes for healthcare. You talk about the salary and wages, you talk about utilities, which is another concern for us based upon the overall cold winter in, in the fact of it. These are variables unpredictable. And again, when we have very little fund balance to resolve the problem, you know, the theory of thought is that the school system shouldn't have a large fund balance, where you have to have a fund balance to deal with these, what we're defining as act of God situations that are out of our control. I can't control the level of illness of, of our staff members or their spouses or their family members. I can't control the weather, you know, in terms of that. And you just can't base that on, year to year, we, we got through another one. The volatility of our healthcare in this day and age causes me great concern. So when you ask me what keeps me up late at night, the little sleep that all of us get to begin with, healthcare constantly is in my head about how we deal with this and balance everything out in the budget regarding compensation, et cetera, et cetera. So there will be more conversation about this because I'm not optimistic how we're going to end on this this year. We're going to have to do some adjustments with it, but we're having those conversations with Care First, and we'll get back to you overall. But I want to begin having that discussion because here we are in March, and I'm worried about end-of-year reconciliations and the need for categorical transfers and how we make do with this and then what we budget for next year. It just dominates the discussion. And we'll leave it at that, but if you see my brow wrinkled up, that's one of the, the wrinkle lines that is devoted to healthcare. It's got one of the lines, you could identify them all, so that's one.
Just one more comment on the fixed charges.
You can name them. Student safety, healthcare.
We'll, we'll do a topographical map.
What did he say? I missed it.
We'll do a topographical map.
And then, and then when we get to the barren ruins back here, and the changing colors of the topography here, and the, I mean, this would be a true experience to show the these...
Yes, sir.
He who wears the crown has a heavy head. So we know that.
Sorry.
There has to be some humor here, because I think we're going to end our meeting by noon unless we're going to continue.
Just one more comment on fixed charges. Just one more comment on fixed charges. You can see right here, the $1,008,000 and the $290,000, that is our portion of the OPEB payment that we sent in, and this other, the $2.5 and the $290,000, that's the county's. That won't show as expenditure here, because they're sending it in from the county on our behalf, and again, they've already sent it in. It has been received by Mabe too. Nothing down here in terms of capital outlay, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Norris, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Questions, board members? Mrs. Allen?
On the group health insurance.
Yes.
I know we've got 15, one, almost 15, two encumbered.
Uh-huh.
And expended, but there's not much of an available balance with still.
Yes.
Three months left to go.
March, April, May, June.
I, I am concerned, while I, I understand the, the expectation, and, and think it's admirable that they, that the commissioners wanted us to utilize any leftover healthcare dollars.
Right.
Towards OPEB.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we are in a, potentially a very tight position, and of, of the encumbered versus expended, I mean, of that 15, almost 15, 2 million is.
It's all been expended.
It's, oh, yeah.
Yes.
Then.
The combination here is the available balance for what we have in terms of SMCPS funds. On the other side is also the employee contributions, which don't show here.
Right. And, you know, the, the $63 charge, that's per person, not per policy, so, you know.
Per year.
Per year, right.
It's not at one time.
So, that, that's also a significant expenditure for us. My understanding, and maybe Ms. McCourt knows this better than I, my understanding of that tax, if you will, is to deal with those who are uninsured through the Affordable Care Act, with the thought that over time, as people sign up for care, that that should, their intention was that would go away eventually, but that's incumbent on sufficient people signing up for healthcare. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, there, there may come a time where we're not being charged that, but, but we have no way of knowing.
And just so you know, that there is an Affordable Care Summit at Anaronda Community College today. We have three of our people there.
Exactly.
Tammy was going to go.
Excellent.
But she stayed for the board meeting because they had to move it, and so we do have people there too. So don't forget, in 2018, you'll start being charged for having a Cadillac program, and there are other associated fees. People who sign up for the governmental program, we will have to pay our fine for those individuals, and so there are many pieces to this, and I'll be looking to Tammy to know all, see all, hopefully, so.
Well, you, you keep us straight, and I continue to really appreciate the information that you list, so that we can go back to this and understand what all the, what all the disparities are and discrepancies, so thank you very much.
And, but the news is not going to be positive here, and so I'm going to make internal adjustments. We're going to look at this, get these numbers, and it's, again, I don't want to reiterate it, you can tell I'm very concerned about this, and we'll, we'll do what's necessary, and we'll bring back our plan for reconciliation, but again, it's a dominant factor in what we do with variables that are out of our control. So thank you, and it's 11:52, sir. Back to you.
Getting close to lunchtime, isn't it?
No, I'm just saying, I'm, goodness, two items. I thought we were going to go on to 5 o'clock here today. We only had two items. Yes, exactly.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Mr. Matthews?
No questions. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Crosby?
I shouldn't say this, but, oh, why not? I watch CNN and Fox, so then I put it together, and I try to come up with something, okay? I heard from Mr. O'Reilly that the healthcare was going to go up more than that 60-some dollars, because they're taking, making it so the unions, naturally, that's how this will come out, the unions don't have to pay as much, so they're going to put it on the others. Have you heard anything like that?
There's all kinds of things that are out there right now, and we'll just have to wait. You have an election coming up, depending upon how things go, you know, there could be some other changes. You see what's happening on the Republican side and the Democratic side. Heard many rumors, but I don't put much.
Stock in rumors.
Stock in rumors until someone hands me a piece of paper that says, "This is what you're going to do," so.
But thank you anyway. You do a good job.
We try.
Peter?
No comments or questions.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Norris?
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, as always. The next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, March 26, 2014, at 5:30 PM in this room, and everybody's waiting for the gavel. This meeting is adjourned.
Before noon. Write that down.